Of August 26, 2020. At 7:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. And I ask that the clerk, please call the roll.
Board member Bartlett. Here. Board member Cone.
Here.
Board member Heel.
Here.
Board member Kentner.
Here.
Board member Miller.
Here.
Board member Peters.
Here.
Board member Stone.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. At this point in time, before we open Agenda Item 3, I'd like to ask Mr. Tuthill if he could give us an update on the mediation.
I can do that. And in fact, with regard to item number three, I'm not sure that there's any particular need for an executive session this evening to discuss legal advice. There have apparently been ongoing discussions between the developer, the neighbors, and certain representatives of the city. I have not been privy to those discussions. But they are taking longer than the parties expected them to. As a result, we did not have a follow-up mediation session on Monday, two days ago. But there has been a new one scheduled for 10 o'clock on September 3. And so my impression is that the principals in the matter are making progress. They continue to work toward a redevelopment proposal that may be acceptable to the main players in this regard. Exactly what they need out of the city, I do not know. They've been discussing it with, I think with Mr. Parker. But it's it's moving in, in my opinion, it's moving in the right direction still. And I would recommend that, you know, it's up to you, of course, as the Board of Adjustment. But I would continue to recommend that we stay the course. Because it's headed in a toward a more positive place. And so Chairman Heel, that's my update. As to what I know, and I can tell you, I will provide a follow-up email to the board following the discussion on September 3, which I will be a participant at. But that's where things are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. At this point, while we have, Bill, I'd like to open it to board member questions, if anybody has questions for Bill. Please raise your hand electronically. That always helps me. Okay, great. I see Kathy, you have a hand. Dale has a hand. So we'll start with Kathy.
Well, thank you, Bill. You answered one of my questions, which was, is there any date coming up of a rescheduling? And it sounds like you said September 3.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. I could wait until after September 3, if we want to schedule something after that. And I'm just, you know, always unsure if my questions are for open discussion or for executive session. And that's, so. Yeah, I think my other questions, but if we're going to have another meeting after September 3, then I could probably wait until then or talk to Mr. Tuthill myself before then. But I do have a couple of other questions.
You are welcome to do that. Board member Kentner.
Kathy, did you hear his response?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we'll see if I, I don't know what the board wants to do. So if we continue it, then I, I will go ahead and maybe call you ahead of time with my questions. But it's definitely something that I would want the board to hear my questions and my answers in person. So if we're not going to schedule another meeting, then I would like to request an executive session. Does that make sense?
Yep, makes sense to me. Were you asking Bill or asking?
I was asking Mr. Tuthill.
Mr. Tuthill.
It certainly makes sense to me. I don't personally feel that there's any action that needs to take place tonight with regard to this. I think you're moving in a direction that, I said you, I think the parties are moving in a direction that is a direction that everyone encourages. And I am, Ms. Kentner, I am happy to have a private discussion with you and then to share any of that with the board as a whole. When the time comes. But for tonight, I would encourage the board to stay the course and see what happens. It appears that the parties, and by that I mean the principal parties, because as you know, the Board of Adjustment cannot commit to any particular outcome. But the parties who are the most interested continue to move in the right direction, albeit slowly.
Okay, thank you, Bill. We have a couple more questions. Dale, I believe you're next.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Tuthill, for the update. My my suggestion, I guess, would make our meeting relatively short since he's, Mr. Tuthill's recommending that we not have executive session, but that we don't need it. I think that considering what our our reason was for delaying or scheduling this meeting, continuing it till tonight, I would say we are still in that same situation that everything is positive and that we probably want to leave whatever whatever we have on the table there. And I would, I would encourage us to continue this meeting till after September 3, if we can find the time.
Mr. Miller, let me say to both you and the rest of the board, including Ms. Kentner, that you have continued a particular agenda item until tonight. If you decide to continue it further, I would prefer, from a procedural standpoint, that there be a motion to continue to a date certain consideration of what I think is Ms. Kentner's motion that's currently on the table.
Thank you. That's a, I appreciate that. And I think I was in part looking to see if there's any consensus or agreement with this, and then we could perhaps decide on a date before we made a motion. Or I guess we could make a motion and then amend it with a date.
All right. Suggestion.
Sure, yes, please.
Would you be open to discussing a date certain so that we can then make a motion with that date while you have the floor?
Yes.
May I?
Oh, please.
Commissioner Miller. I'm thinking of our calendar, and Aaron, correct me, I do not believe we have any regular business of either the Planning Commission or the Board scheduled for the near future. So that date would be a meeting specifically for the Board of Adjustment and the continuation of this meeting. We could add an item to it. We could, we could do what we're doing this evening and continue for the BOA and open at 7:00 and then recess and reconvene as the Planning Commission for further discussion on the bylaws as well. So that, that's an option too.
Okay, very good. So I, I might suggest the 9th of September, which is after the date of the meeting.
I am going to tell you that assuming the wildfires do not interrupt my trip, I am going on an overnight float trip down the Colorado to fish on the 9th and the 10th of September.
We'll go with you.
No access, a computer or a phone. We have a lot of access to smoke, but that is not going to work for me. But otherwise, the rest of September is wide open.
Okay. Then if you wouldn't mind just adding one more raft, I think we can all get in there.
You'll need to bring your own fishing rod.
I got you covered. That sounds good to me. So, well, how about if I made it the 16th then? Is there any objections to the 16th of September while I have the floor?
I'm good with that.
That would be the next one. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this meeting, this agenda item, this specific one, till the 16th of September for another Board of Adjustment meeting.
In what time?
Oh, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
We have a motion to continue this meeting to September 16 at 7:00 PM. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from board member Cone. Any discussion? Mr. Cone, you had your hand up. Did you want to make any additional comments?
I wanted to just ask a question of Mr. Rice. I originally had on my calendar Planning Commission meeting for the 2nd. I gather that's no longer viable. But I just wanted a confirmation that we're no longer going to meet on that date.
And that is correct.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no, no further hands, I will close comment and ask Secretary Schultz if he will take a roll call vote on this motion.
Board member Bartlett.
Aye.
Board member Cone.
Aye.
Board member Heel.
Aye.
Board member Kentner.
Aye.
Board member Miller.
Aye.
Board member Peters.
Aye.
Board member Stone.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Secretary Schultz. At this point, then I will close. Well, actually, we didn't even really open item 3. Executive session. So at this point, I think I will remove that from the agenda. Now, if there are no objections to that, and we will move on to item 4. Do we want to continue with item 4? I suppose we should open it and find out, right?
I'm sorry, I thought item 4 was what we were continuing.
Well, item 4 was discussion of our options after executive session. So I guess you're right, I'm a little too literal in my reading here. So essentially, we have continued that. So we will move on to item 5 then. Thank you, Dale. Mr. Schultz, would you read item 5?
Item 5, general business.
Thank you, sir. Are there any general business items from staff, Mr. Rice?
No, not at this time. I think we're going to talk about bylaws and, and as I mentioned earlier, there's, we have nothing calendared in the near future for the, for either body, the Board of Adjustment or the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Any other general business, any, any hands? I don't see any hands raised. So I will close general business. And with that, we are adjourned. Is that a hand, Teresa? Okay, with that, we are adjourned at 7:15 PM. And we will now convene the regular meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission. It's a study session of the Lakewood Planning Commission at 7:15.
Between meetings, I'm going to log off.
That's right, Dale. Thank you for letting us know and good luck with everything.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cox here. I don't think that my presence is needed for the study session. But I indicated by email to Mr. Rice earlier today that if anything comes up, I'm not going anywhere. So I'll be around if legal support is needed. Just give me a ring. Okay, you're not going to go rafting with, with Bill, you know, right? Yeah, no, you ever seen him drive a raft? No, thank you, Tim. We'll, we'll talk to you soon. So.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. So at this point, study session, we're in a little bit more relaxed format. I'm not going to call upon Secretary Schultz to read the, the items. It's pretty straightforward. Our item A is Planning Commission Policies and Procedures. And you know, in prefacing that, I hope that people have had an opportunity to to look at all of the information that staff had accumulated and prepared for us. And we do appreciate that. We talked last time that we met on this about approaches to this. And there's a couple of ways to go. And I still kind of am in the camp that I think the cleanest approach is to start with what we have, the rules and regulations that we've been operating under. And, and just go through them article at a time and talk about updates and get suggestions. And Teresa, let me know how that's going to work for you in terms of keeping track of it. We appreciate the spreadsheet that you created for that. But my suggestion is that we just go through it, article at a time, and get our comments out there and discuss them and, and just move through it. And you know, I'm not convinced that we need to attempt to get all the way through everything tonight. This is a process. And I think in beginning the process, we need to we need to be thorough and we need to allow ourselves enough time to really process everything that we're trying to do here. My first suggestion, I'll just kind of kick it off, has to do with the title. You know, in previous study sessions, I think we, we acknowledge that there's different, different ways that people refer to what technically is our rules and regulations. Sometimes it's called policy and procedure. Sometimes it's known as bylaws. And I was initially willing to be flexible on renaming that. But when reading the charter, I realized that the charter specifically refers to rules and regulations of the Planning Commission. So I think since that is the way our regulating policy for the commission is titled, I think we should stick with that. Is there any discussion or input on that? Teresa, I see a hand up.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. And one of them, actually, I had a similar thought about the title. So the first thing is I want to clarify what the spreadsheet is. So what I did, guys, was I developed just kind of for my own, for my own tracking, a spreadsheet, and I can share it with you guys. But like, you know, by page and section and paragraph, and then who submitted the suggestion, what it was, what was the reason for the change? And then what I'd like to do, once we get all of those, what's the reason for the change? All in one place, then, there's another part of the spreadsheet that talks about the pros and cons. You know, goes in a little deeper about what do we want to, you know, do we want to keep these changes? What are the what's the final revision? What's the reason for the final revision? Are there any references? And it's just a way to kind of keep ourselves organized as we go through. And also for transparency. So that's the spreadsheet. Alan, I did look into the title, but I didn't look where you looked. So I think I'm with you on, let's not try to change the charter.
Well, I think, you know, we could do something like broaden or somehow explain, you know, that the rules and regulations of the Planning Commission could also be referred to as policy and procedures. But I think that would just kind of muddy the water. To me, I think we all know rules and regulations. That's what we have. And I think with the charter designation, I'd like to keep it simple.
Yeah, I looked, you know, dictionary definitions of rules and regulations and policies and procedures and bylaws and honestly, rules and regulations will work just fine for what these are.
Okay, so I don't see in here any objections. So we'll just leave that one, leave the title as it is. And next, jump into General Provisions 1.1. There's things I really like about that. I appreciate the description of the governing documents. I think that's a great place for our rules and regulations to start. One, one thing that I think we might add as a, as a clarifier is the kind of standard language, and Paul, help me out if you have any suggestions here about, you know, in the end of a, in the event of a conflict between, you know, rules and regulations, the city charter, municipal code, and Robert's rules, the city charter shall prevail, or something to that effect, because everything we do is subject to the charter. How would you, how would you word that? Do you have a suggestion?
Something, so as we go through this, it will be kind of difficult for me to come up with language on the fly that, you know, you guys say everybody agrees to and that we adopt. So something similar to what you have suggested is in the zoning ordinance, right?
Right, that's kind of where I'm coming from, yeah.
Right. So if we open Chapter 1, the zoning ordinance, I think it talks about, I can't remember the title, and I don't have it in front of me. But it talks about the function of the ordinance. So it says, you know, there will be a planning commission and their job is, there's a BOA and their job is, it says that if you have conflicting provisions section, right? And we can use very similar language that we have in the zoning ordinance and incorporate it into the rules and procedures. So I would recommend something very similar to what you said as you were opening the discussion. And I, what I would suggest is that make a note, 1.1, and then we'll mail the group a suggested language change. How's that?
That sounds great. And Teresa, as far as your tracking purposes, do you want us to submit verbiage suggestions to you? Or how do you want to do this?
You know, what would be great? Well, are you all suggesting stuff to Paul? To Mr. Rice? Or is he suggesting language to us? I'm sorry, I thought he was going to. What's up?
On 1.1, I was going to provide a suggestion to the Planning Commission.
All right, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
I think it could work both ways, you know, we're all kind of focused on this together. And I really think anybody needs to feel free to provide input or suggestion staff or, you know, commissioners. So in this case, Paul has offered, I think that's good. And if anybody wants to offer as well, send it to Teresa. Is that the protocol here? For inclusion in the spreadsheet?
Yeah, yeah. And I think, Mr. Rice, what I would like to do for this spreadsheet, unless, unless you have a staff member who loves spreadsheets as much as I do, is I think I can pull out of their notes for this meeting, I should be able to pull stuff out of there to put in here and then follow up with detail if, if needed. That's probably the best way or the most, Teresa.
Okay, I see several hands up. Alex? Are you, you complete Teresa first? Okay, thank you, Alex. You're up.
Yeah, I'm a little off topic and maybe backing up a bit. But I'm wondering if we ought to, in the packet for these study sessions, put out a link or a copy of the bylaws for the public to be able to access along with the agenda, should the one person in the entire city who's watching us right now want to follow along? I think that'd be helpful. But I agree with what's been suggested up to this point. I think those are all good ideas. Thank you, Teresa, for taking on the, the role of trying to pull this stuff together. I do wonder if in the future, moving forward, like if we were to pick up this process in a future study session, what the most efficient way to pick up would be, is, is there going to be a way, Teresa, you think, where the spreadsheet is disseminated maybe a couple of days before the next study session, where we could kind of digest where we left off last time and be prepared to come back where we left off?
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And if you have additional thoughts, you could, I mean, I'd like for it to be a shared tool. I don't know if we have a way of sharing documents on Teams and Office 365, I'm not really sure. But we could, we could certainly pass this thing around. And then I can put some notes about its intention and stuff, but.
And Paul, is that something we can do to share the, the rules and regulations? I'll try to stop calling them bylaws before the next study session for the public?
Yes, so you're, we can, yeah, we're, there's some other discussion going on internally with staff about how materials is posted, materials are posted on Lakewood Speaks. And so, yes, we can take the agenda when we have the, the rules and procedures discussion and put a link to the bylaws that are existing.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I had right now.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Alex. I think that's a great suggestion about posting our current rules and regulations. Paul, is that something that you could do each time that we schedule a meeting or a study session?
Specific for this, that will be standard language that we include on the agenda for this, this topic of discussion.
Okay, great, thank you. Teresa, I see your hands up again. Oops. I think you're muted.
I wasn't sure. Yeah, thanks. I wasn't sure how you wanted to proceed, like, you, you talked about Section 1.1. If other people have comments on that, are you going to do a round robin? What are you, what are you thinking?
I think that's the right way to move. I was just going to say, that's my comment. Does anybody have any input? Perfect. Let's just round robin, see if anybody has any other ideas on 1.1.
So I did have some ideas. And actually, it applies to 1.1, but maybe you'll, you'll hear this recurring as we go through the sections that I would like to be, I'd like to tie these a little more tightly to the documents that they reference. So applicable sections, and I can't, let me see, let me get 1.1 in front of me because I can't remember what it was. So, yeah, it references the Charter, the Municipal Code. And rather than just reference those documents, can we be more specific about the sections that apply to us? Just, I don't know, as a way of better transparency, perhaps, and clarity.
That is a good question. You know, I see some benefit to it, but I also see that it would take some research unless Paul or staff has some institutional knowledge about all of the places that we would need to reference.
And when you see, I'll kind of keep, stay with the zoning ordinance as an example here. When you see the ordinance, it references state statutes, city charter, municipal code, and some other things. And the reason we haven't cited specific references to those documents, if those documents are updated and a citation that we've cited has changed, we have to go through and amend the document every time, and you have to track that. And so with like state statutes would be, would be very difficult. And this, this is where, you know, if we wanted to bring Tim in, that's the reason we don't do it, is because if a document changes somewhere else, unless we're tracking them, you know, on a monthly basis, we get references that are quickly outdated.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for explaining that. That makes a lot of sense.
That's a good question. I appreciate the answer. Any other thoughts or comments on 1.1? Okay, you want to, let's move on. 1.2 is your requirement with the city charter, everybody can, can read what's in there now. Are there any, any ideas or questions or concerns with regard to 1.2?
Can we get a shorter title, please? We're crying in the mud.
That's a long title, yeah. Down here.
I'll welcome some suggested language from, from planning staff, but but that, that's one thing is it's, it's a little, it's a little long of a title, I think for clarity. Something shorter might be more understandable. The other comment, so, so the other comment I had on, on 1.2 is, and this is, this is kind of extra to the policies, procedures. But I don't know if there's a written onboarding procedure for new commission members. If there's not one written, that'd be, that'd be nice to, you know, just kind of have a consistent. If there's not one written, that'd be, that'd be nice to, you know, just kind of have a consistency and to know what's going on, just a structured way. To make sure that that requirement in 1.2 of being familiar happens. And that it's written down, and then another comment that I had. Was to move paragraph two in this section. To article four, and then. Beef up the language in this paragraph two to talk about reviewing the packet information prior to the meeting. Does that make sense as you guys look at that paragraph?
Yeah, let me look at that.
Yeah, you know, that seemed out of place to me, and thank you. Yeah.
I like, I like the idea, can I comment on your suggestion regarding title? Maybe we restructure where the title is a little bit simpler and it says familiarity with governing documents. And then underneath the title, we list what those governing documents are.
That sounds great.
Kind of make it a little simpler and clear. Is that okay? Is that acceptable?
That sounds great, that sounds great.
Let me think. Yeah, I was looking at the. That language, tell me again your suggestion about relocating the second paragraph, I didn't quite follow that.
Alright, to take that and put it in, put it under article four, which. What is that? Let me see which one that is, I'm scrolling, conduct of members.
Conduct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe, maybe it kind of goes in there.
Okay, I'd be fine with that.
Section.
I have a question, what, I guess for everybody, but also maybe Paul first. You know, if we make a move like that, what does a city typically like to see in terms of cross referencing? Like if we just wanted to say in section 1.2, in addition to. Being familiar with the governing documents, you know, commission members should also. You know, follow article four for conduct and cross-reference that article, or do you guys typically try to avoid? That type of cross-referencing in a rules and regulations like this?
The rules and regulations are, we're doing it right now, so the planning commission is, is. Currently putting those together. They're not a, and you'll adopt them. When we get them together, it's not an ordinance, right, so it's not something that's law, so these are, are something that. If we get these together and we get into a meeting and we're following them and we want to change them, the planning commission can change them at any time, so. The. The, what, I guess what I would get with references, we can cross-reference or put more information in if you want to make it clear. You know, like my comment that I was talking about why we don't reference specific sections whole. So whatever this group decides to do, we can, we can put those documents, whatever you feel most comfortable with. If you want everything written out in each section and, you know, repeated, we can do that. I'll give you, I'll go back to the zoning ordinance, one of the things we did with the ordinance where we had. Sections that would repeat through article and article and article, we tried to pull those all out and put into one section so that it carried through and. You know, you, you didn't have pages and pages of pages of the same language throughout the document, and so it's your comfort level.
I like that, because at the end of the day, I would hope that we're still at 10 pages for our rules and regulations in case we need to pull it up. We want to make it a quick reference, but I tend to agree with Teresa that. The second paragraph under section 1.2 feels more like conduct to me, and so if we do move it. And maybe it's a moot point if we rename the section, I just don't want to lose track of where that went, but. I agree with that suggestion, Teresa.
So, what, thanks, board member Bartlett, so the idea is that we would have this spreadsheet, but I believe what we would also have is a track changes version of this document, is that right?
Yeah.
So we would have, okay, so we would have.
And as, since, I'd like to make a comment on the, on the track changes. So as we, as we start this, we'll, we'll get the track changes, right, that's not the problem. What the, what, how do I say this? When you're reading the track changes, there are all kinds of little quirks and formatting errors that are not correctable until we turn it off and fix the darn thing essentially. So don't focus on those, paragraph breaks between. Pages, things get off-centered and so forth, and so we'll correct all that for you formatting wise. It's, it's just, it's one way to make sure that we're visualizing everything, but what you see is, isn't necessarily the finished product. Throw that out, I'm working on another draft of something that's causing me all kinds of issues, so. Just sharing a thought.
Alright, are you complete there, Teresa? Alright, thank you. Any other thoughts or comments on? Article one, looks like we're pretty complete there. I just wanted to kind of interject a. A strategy or approach comment that I intended to make upfront. You know. Staff has done the research and provided us with a lot of. Documents from other municipalities to look at. And I hadn't really, in my analysis, I've looked at a lot of that, but my focus is beginning with. The document we actually have, and what I think might work well. You know, is just after we go through what we have and we realize where we might have gaps, then we go. Through the process again and entertain suggestions about specific language that others are using. I think that'll keep us on the track of focusing on our document, and I just wanted to lay that out there and see if anybody had any questions or input on that. Does that seem like an okay way to keep, keep going? Okay, good.
I think, hey, I'm sorry. I was going to ask Paul maybe another question, if there's a particular municipality that the city. Has seen, you know, rules and regulations or other documents that they prefer, or is it just kind of up to us, or? Any input on that would be appreciated.
That's, that's up to the planning commission, you know, we, the one thing we did in the research, you know, we tried to find jurisdictions with, along the front range. Specifically in the metro area, and it's what you're, I think if you've looked at the documents, you know, they vary quite a bit. So some are more detailed, some are less detailed. It's, it's, that staff is looking from direction from this commission on how to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Alex and Paul. So we'll move to article two, members and officers. Section one, members, any questions or discussion there?
Whoops. We do, and I forgot to.
Oh, Kathy, I see, is that a hand?
Yeah, sorry.
There it is, thank you. Proceed, please.
There we go, sorry. Yeah, I have a question on this. I couldn't find any other place that it says that there are seven members to the planning commission. I know it's not in charter, the charter just says there shall be a planning commission. And I could find in code where it said that the planning commission and the board of adjustment should have the same membership. But I could, is this the only place that it exists? That specifies that the planning commission have seven members?
Commissioner Kettner, did you look and the liquid municipal code?
Yeah. I did, that's why I'm asking, so maybe that's something that we can, and I'm sorry that I didn't, you know, I just thought I was wrong and I just double-checked. You know, before the meeting and.
Right, and so I don't have the, and to kind of look now, I don't think is real efficient with my time. I think in the municipal, so there's actually three places when you go to look for the planning commission, you go to the charter and you go to the municipal code, but I think you actually go to two places. So I don't think it's under the section in the municipal code that says planning commission, I think you've got to go to the section that refers to boards and commissions.
That's, yeah, that's absolutely, I did, you know, and I did a search of planning commission, so.
Make a note and find it.
So I'm curious about that, because it doesn't seem like that should be something we should be able to. Change, and we mentioned that this is a document that's just for us.
Right, and I think it is outside, I think the number for the body is set by city council.
So if you.
We'll need to find that for you.
I'm sorry that I couldn't do that, if you wouldn't mind trying, I'd appreciate that. Know where that is.
I just pulled it up, I'm interrupting you again. I think it's in, Paul, it might be municipal code, chapter 216. 216, 010, planning commission, item A, and item F, both mention seven members.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I figured it was, yeah.
Yeah, I hadn't looked either, Kathy, I just pulled it up while you were speaking, but I think it is in there, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, great. Alex and Kathy, I guess your hands are no longer up. Alex, did you have anything further, Kathy? Okay.
I was trying to raise the hand and not interrupt, but I keep interrupting, so I apologize to both you, Alan, and Kathy, but I'll try to use that.
I find it helpful, others may not rely on it quite as much, but I appreciate it. Okay, so we're at section 2.2, appointment, any? Questions, ideas? Okay, I see nothing there, and we'll move on. 2.3, advising candidates during the selection process. I was kind of curious about that one and whether or not we need to. To look at, maybe a little more clarity. You know, I understand that, you know, there's responsibility of the steering committee to advise candidates. Regarding time commitment, and that's, that seems appropriate. One thing that I felt maybe we should talk about adding is the application process and, and Paul. You know, this may change, so maybe my idea doesn't make sense, but here's kind of where I'm, where I'm coming from. Is if we could stipulate a process or a contact, something to the effect that, you know, the application should be submitted to the city clerk. Who will provide an acknowledgement to the applicant upon receipt, along with a copy of the rules and regulations. I'm kind of, what I'm shooting for is to a little bit better define. How the whole application process works. Because I think it's sort of nebulous at this point, and I know we had issues with. Applications as we had vacancies over last year. When there was a staff change in the city clerk's office, things kind of fell through the cracks for a while. Is there anything that you see that we could do in, in this document to help clarify the process?
So. And that's kind of where we need to, we need, I don't know if we want to say tread softly. So that the clerk's office processes all the applications and they actually define that, and so for the planning commission to. The answer is yes, I think there's some language that we can add, we can't change the process of another department and how they. You know, process applications specifically for the planning commission, they have, they have kind of a broad process of how they address the whole city. Things change for each different board and body, board and commission, so I think there's some language that we can add, but we can't outline the. A change to their process, is, is that, I'm not being real clear, but.
Oh, I understand, that clarifies a lot really, and, and. I think what we might want to work toward, and it'll take some sort of time massaging the words. We can't change the process, but if we could do something to clarify that there is a process and it runs through the clerk's office.
And that's appropriate, right?
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I was aiming for. Are you, are you complete there, Paul?
Yes.
Okay, I see a couple of hands, I'm not sure who was first, Johan and Teresa. Johan, you want to go for it? Thank you, Teresa.
I just wanted to weigh in, because the appointing authority really has quite a bit of discretion in terms of how they do it. You know, that's city council, and they have a procedure, and they can instruct the clerk too, but. You know, it's almost an obvious fact that we don't appoint ourselves. And they can impose. Duties and restrictions on us to some extent, although we can recommend the city council. You know, make recommendations to them in terms of where things might go. I know that, well, one of the things that isn't council's responsibility, but I know as people came aboard as. Members of the planning commission and board of adjustment, they often didn't get any copies of anything. Right off when they should have. And of course, that's a ministerial duty, but someone will ask to do it, and maybe. Council can help that, can assist that along, and Mr. Rice, maybe you can too. In terms of when people are appointed, that they get something like this book, which I got. And which needs to be updated, in fact, we're working on it right now, so. I'll make that as a comment.
And that is, that is something that's appropriate, so if the commission wants to either find a section to include this in. Or create a section, essentially packet material or new member orientation materials, and you can outline that. They get a copy of the bylaws, the subdivision code, the zoning ordinance, and other documents, I think we try and include. And I would ask commissioners, Kettner and Peters, you know, we even have a booklet that we buy. Orientation for a planning commissioner, and if you haven't got one of those, I'll make sure that we get one for you. And so we can, we can, you know, that's something that's appropriate that could go into these rules as well.
Okay, thank you, Paul, and Johan, Teresa, I think you had a hand up next?
Yeah, and that's exactly, board member Cohen, that's exactly what I had in mind when I suggested. That we add an SOP or something, that there's some kind of written procedure for onboarding. So I like the idea better, Mr. Rice, of putting it actually in here, I think the more that we can make this self-contained, I like the brevity. Board member Bartlett, but I think maybe, maybe the inclusion of this might help.
Okay, are you complete, Teresa?
You know, there was one more thought, I like the way you're, I like the direction you're heading, because my question when I read the language, it shall be the responsibility of the city council, screening committee, yada, yada. I thought that was a little on place for our governing document to tell the city council what it shall do. So I think if we can rework this section to be more along the lines of what you're suggesting, Chairman Hill, I think that's going to be much more appropriate and useful.
Thank you, and my, my following thought here kind of dovetails off of. What you guys just said, and Paul in particular, you know, when I went through orientation, it was, we all went through the same orientation, and we learned a lot, there's a lot of material, a lot of information presented. And that is sort of one cut of becoming a planning commissioner. To me, there's another angle, there's another cut that really isn't covered at all, and that's what I would call a little bit more of a hands-on. Commission-run orientation. Staff does a great job of introducing a new board member or commission member to city process and to personnel. And to flow and to quasi-judicial, and all of these very important things. But what I, my suggestion would be is that we, under. You know, new member orientation, we have what I would call. Maybe a module, if you will, and we could decide how we want to run that. Where essentially we would have somebody, a planning commission member, that we could figure out how we want to designate that. Who works with a new member to talk about the flow of meetings, the process, the little details that help everything happen smoothly. Give maybe some examples of how staff prepares all. Give, um, maybe some examples of how staff prepares all of this work in advance for us and that we get these packets electronically, go over like what speaks and how that impacts our role and our responsibility, kind of what I would call more of a commissioner hands-on orientation. Now, I just basically see two levels. Staff has got the first level covered beautifully. But what seemed to be missing for me is a commission level, a little bit better indoctrinate indoctrination into the nuts and bolts of our process. Does that make sense to people to kind of expand that? Alex, I see a hand up.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you kind of took the words out of my mouth. I was going to suggest something similar. I mean, take the corporate approach and have like a buddy system where, uh, a new commissioner has a buddy assigned to them. But to go over those things, you know, just one-on-one, I think that still fits within, uh, the rules that we're supposed to operate underneath as a commission and our communication with one another. And I think it would fit appropriately, like in an SOP kind of format that, um, Teresa mentioned, that could be maybe appended to our rules and regulations and not really be spelled out within the actual section, but documented somewhere. And maybe that would take, um, some of the responsibility, not, I shouldn't say responsibility, but some work off-staff's part to help onboard a new commissioner, just to walk them through the process. I know I, when I came on, I didn't even understand some of the processes for a public hearing, that I probably should have before I was thrown right into it. And it's no fault of staff. It was just, me being a little bit naive to the process. So I think that's a really good suggestion and I would agree with that. Yeah.
Thank you. I, yeah, I kind of felt the same way. I, even though I've been watching a lot of meetings and attending a lot of meetings, I felt pretty, um, unprepared to do my job professionally and to, to really settle in quickly to the role. So I, that's what I'd like to see us do. Thank you, Alex, for, uh, your input on that, Paul.
And, um, you know, I can, um, you know, kind of i- i- my experience as well, when, um, so we've had, uh, a few commissioners, resigned, they, they've moved to other states or jurisdictions or something. Um, we've had the, the commissioners turn out, term out and, um, when, uh, i- if we don't have anything on, so their, uh, council appoints them in March and then, uh, technically they're, they're acting in April at some time. And if we don't have an agenda item, um, when they're appointed, they could, they could wait months before they're actually engaged, right? So we try and get, um, a, a staff orientation relatively shortly after we know, uh, who's been appointed and, and we always try and do it if there is an agenda item before, um, we get into a, a hearing setting. So what I'm rambling on about, one thing you could do is, uh, just not calendar a date, some date in April and you do, uh, you, you can still do the buddy process, but you could hold a, it's a study session hearing just to get the commission together, introduce themselves and, and kind of talk about how you conduct meetings. And so you could say something to the effect that, um, the, the first, uh, study session after they're appointed in the, the calendar year, after council, um, appoints the body. And I wouldn't pick dates or months because we also had, um, council not appoint, uh, commissioners in March. They've actually not followed through until April or, or May, and then they're sitting in June. So if, if council, and I can't remember why, I think they, one time they didn't have a, an application at all, like they didn't have applicants for the, the position. I think another time, a, a couple of the app, there, there was a, a low turnout and, and not who they were looking for. So you, if you were to say April, you could run in conflict with that if, if, uh, council doesn't have an applicant pool and they have to push that off. So you could say, once they're, uh, once the new commissioners are appointed in the calendar year, the first study station, session date following that, uh, but that's a, something you might want to consider as well.
I think that's a, a great idea. I, I like the format of a study session because it could be, you know, relatively informal, but at the same time, a great learning opportunity to talk about flow and maybe give examples and do the sort of things I'm, I'm hoping to do. I think, um, that's a good suggestion. When you were making your comment, uh, it triggered a thought for me that I hadn't really, um, put into my notes tonight, which is how, our resignations are handled. You know, it seems to me that we are appointed by city council that when a commission member resigns, that resignation should go to city council and then be copied to the planning department. I don't think that has happened in the past. My understanding recently was that resignations went directly to the planning department. Is there a process in place there, Paul?
Typically, uh, if they come to the planning department, we send them to the clerks because the, the, that's where they're resigning from is the clerk's, uh, office, um, processes appointments and commissions by council. And so, um, yes, staff will come back because there isn't a, a formal action and let the commission know that if a member has resigned, with, but there's nothing formal.
Okay. Well, that, that's something I think we might want to clarify, um, in our rules and regulations, cause just so people know and they notify through proper channels, because there have been times where we had, uh, uh, an empty seat for a long time. And I think if we had a little bit tighter process, it might help that. I mean, there are things along the way that are going to impact the timing of filling a seat, of course. But I think if we could clarify or streamline the, the flow of, of notice, that would be something I would add to, um, term of office, maybe two point four. Any thoughts by, by Johan? I see a hand up there.
Yeah, thank you. Um, incidentally, did we lose, did I miss something? I had to leave the screen for, uh, just a few minutes. Did we lose, uh, Commissioner Miller? Um, I don't see him anywhere.
Yes, he had, um, an emergency situation come up where he had to leave at the end of the first meeting tonight.
Okay.
He, he announced it, um, at the beginning of the first meeting or perhaps before, so, um, that's.
Yeah. I noticed that in section two, one apropos, what we're talking about, that large members may be, wait a minute. Uh, each member of the commission shall be a resident of the city in a ward from which he or she is appointed and should have such qualifications deemed necessary. Wait a minute. I've lost the place that I was wanting to refer to because, um, there's a place that, um, allows a, uh, sitting, um, uh, a commission member to, um, sit as long, if, if he moves to another ward, just continue sitting, uh, on the commission until his or her successor is appointed. But, um, yeah, it, it's section two nine. A commissioner who ceases to be a resident of the ward may continue to serve until a new member has been appointed by city council, but it's not clear if that appears, if a, and it may be self-evident, and that's why it's not there, the commissioner who moves out of the city but is still able to participate in meetings can do that. I would expect, once they leave the city, they, uh, no longer will be, uh, able to sit on the council or on the commission. And, um, I wonder if we need more clarity on that. And I brought, bring that up because it seems to be contingent on other things that we were discussing in terms of, uh, you know, who's on the commission and who can stay active.
Okay, any, um, any other hands up? I'll, I'll, uh, certainly make a comment there, Johan. I, I appreciate your point and, we do need to, oh, go ahead.
Oh, it could be self-evident. Uh, that was my first thought, but, you know, what do we do if somebody moves to Arvada and still shows up for meetings? Where are we on that?
Well, I, my, my input on it would be that I, I think when somebody moves out of the city, it would be appropriate for that to be effective termination of their service.
That's right.
Just, yeah, it doesn't feel right to me to have somebody who no longer resides here making decisions.
Right. I may be seeing a contradiction that isn't really there.
Yeah, um, Paul, I see a hand up. What do you think?
And I would caution about putting, uh, you, you, you can put something in the, in the, these rules that's kind of general. Um, I can't cite it. Uh, I need to do the research, but there is something regarding, uh, whether it's the boards and commissions in the municipal code or specific to the planning commission. But it does say you have to be a resident, uh, in, yes, sitting president of, of Lakewood. So there's another document, um, that governs that. So what language you choose to put together, make sure it's not in conflict, um, with that, with that document. And, and I could, like I said, I can do some research on that. You know, one of the things I think I'll do for the, the next meeting, Aaron and I will get together, um, the three or four sections in the charter and municipal code and make sure you have copies of all those.
I know this one, it's two point oh one and the other one, like Alex said, is two point one six. Yeah.
Okay. We'll get those together and we'll get you, um, I'll take a look at them. If it's, um, not a huge document, I'll send you the entirety in case you want to flip through or, or look for other, um, items in that, in that chapter. Um, if not, I'll give you the references specific to the, the planning commission. So we'll make sure you get those.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Paul. Um, Alex?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, Paul. I, I pulled up, um, Aaron's email from June twenty-sixth. It looks like, maybe. Yeah, and, and it does look like he provided some of those documents, but I agree, it'd be good to have them side by side and maybe as a body, as we're working through our rules. I don't know, um, how to best update or what supersedes another, but I think the language and the wording that's used between the governing document should be consistent. That's been mentioned before. Seems to be more detail in the municipal code for the planning commission than is contained in our bodies or on our rules and regulations. So maybe the easiest fix in some of these cases is if we find something in the municipal code that has the detail we're looking for, we can just bring that into our rules and regulations. That might be a, a good approach. But, yeah, we can maybe look at them side by side before the next meeting and be prepared to make those suggestions.
All right, thank you, Alex. So I'm kind of off track here as to where we are in, in terms of what section in the code? Do we need to continue discussion on, on two point three or two point four at all? Don't see any hands up.
I actually had a question on two point four. So, um, my first term, I came on to replace a commissioner who left in the middle of um, her term and I served that out and then was reappointed. And I think what's unclear to me in the language in section two point four is um, if there's a total limit, is the total limit eight years or is it six years or what happens if you, finish, you know, an unexpired term and then get reappointed? The second sentence of section two point four isn't quite clear enough to me to be able to discern what happens in that instance.
Okay, that's a great, um, point you brought up. We have a couple, or Kathy, I guess, has a, a comment. Or did you want an answer from, from Paul before we go to other comments?
Either or, I mean, Kathy's might be similar.
It, it might be the same one. I just read it and I can't remember if it was two point oh one or two point one six or where it says it, but it says, as long as you've served at least a half a term, it would be considered to serve a term and it's a two-term limit. So that would imply six years rather than eight year, or rather than ten years. But, but that's, I think, where it goes back to what somebody was saying, that it might be nice to have that language from the code where it says it and put it right in there.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the point you brought up, Alex. I'd like to see the, some clarification in there. I know the city council, um, went through a lot of, um, you know, gyrations about terms and how you define a half term and they did a lot of work on that. So, um, I think we should do something to clarify it. I'm not quite sure what that answer is. Certainly open to language, uh, suggestions, but thank you for, for bringing that up. Any other thoughts? Kathy, were you complete?
That was it.
Okay, you're complete. So, um, shall we move on to two point five? Um, secretary to the, I see Rhonda has a hand.
Yeah, I was just, is it, just asking for clarification on that, um, previous question. So it's not clear to me from our discussion, is it two full terms plus less than half of a term? Is the maximum, and I believe that was the determination that was made at city council. So is that, is that what we're operating under here as well?
That would be my understanding, Paul. What do you think?
Yes, you, you, you get two full terms and if you replace a commissioner that's only served, uh, eighteen months, essentially the, the remainder of their term serves as one of your terms. So, so the, the, the term is for four years, half of four years is, uh, and then I, did I do my, I didn't do my math right? So twenty-four months would be two years, right? So anything that's, um, less than twenty-four months, right, you're, that can, is considered a, a, a full term.
Paul, should we add some?
I'm confused. It's, it's less than twenty-four months is considered a full term. What's the maximum that somebody could serve on the planning commission if they came in partway through? What's, what is the maximum?
Right, so I'll, I'll use months. Um, so let's see. If they were, if someone were in, uh, were to serve twenty-five months, right? So the newly appointed commissioner could serve, uh, uh, twenty-three months and, um, so not quite two years, so a, a, a year and eleven months and then another eight years.
Okay, so eight years.
Would give you.
That time that was less than two years. Okay.
That would give you nine years and eleven months. Yeah, and there, you can even finagle it down to the day and, and go from there. Um, I can't do that math in my head.
No, no, that's all. But that gives me the, the, the idea. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
Right.
Okay, I think we had several hands up. Teresa, Johan and Kathy. I'm not sure who's next. Johan, you want to go?
I'll defer. I think I was the last one that put up his hand, so.
Hey, Teresa, Kathy, who wants to go? Teresa?
I'll be quick.
Okay.
Teresa, I don't know if this is something for you to make a note of, but it's, um, in the municipal code, two point oh one, point oh three oh is the exact language about, it says, uh, um, persons appointed to boards or commissions listed in the city council policy and procedures manual may serve a maximum of two consecutive, oh, I'm sorry, I, I went a little back. Commission, uh, any person appointed who serves or has served at least one half a term on such board or commission so could be considered to have served a term. So we could maybe just lift the language right from there. Cause it was so clear, it was so easy to read. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Teresa?
I was moving on to two point five. Are you ready to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to go. Is any other thought, thoughts on two point four? Going, going gone. Um, yes, Teresa, you want to begin two point five?
Yeah, just please break the paragraph. Just break it after that item D. It's almost, you know, it's another topic really that starts with the secretary shall also be custodian on the commissioners' records. Yeah, so just, just, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I, um, see we have Johan, do you have a hand up?
Uh, yes, I do. Say something on that because, uh, you know, Uh, say something on that because, uh, you know, before each regular commission meeting, the secretary shall deliver to each. Commission member packet, uh, containing and then it gives, enumerates the agenda for the next meeting, staff report. Copy the minutes of the previous meeting. I think we ought to insert something there about. Online, um, uh, references, and I think particularly of Lakewood speaks. Um, I think, for example, if anyone has submitted anything in writing, it ought to be included in the packet. And then I think there ought to be an additional reference perhaps in the rules as, uh, to Lakewood speaks. And that this should be available to the public and to us. Uh, I think that's in effect what's happening now, but we ought to acknowledge that somewhere within two, five. And I think there'll be some other parts in the rules where, um, an additional reference ought to be made to the internet. And to Lakewood speaks.
Okay, um, thank you, Johan. Alex, you have your hand up?
Definitely agree. I think that's a good suggestion, but maybe instead of, um. You know, naming a site like Lakewood speaks, we might just say the city's website in case that does change in the future or something.
Right. Yeah, I think Paul made a great suggestion that we want to be generic in terms of describing platforms. But, uh, yeah, certainly. Thank you, Alex. Anything else? You good? Okay, thank you. I kind of jumped on your time there, I'm sorry. I have a hand up, but Paul, you go first, please.
And, um, so kind of following up on Commissioner Bartlett's comment. Um, yes, so we can, so these bylaws, I think, were, uh, updated in two thousand eight. So we're a little behind the times, so we'll make reference to, uh, the latest technology and so forth. And then, um, going back to Commissioner Bartlett's question earlier, this is where I would come back and say. Um, so what we'll do, Aaron and I will take a look at the bylaws that we sent you. And if another jurisdiction has done just what, um, you're asking us to do. We're probably gonna borrow some language from, say, Westminster and, and say, is this something? Um, that you're looking for, and if you don't like it, we can, we can tweak it. But that's one of the things with the samples is we can, um, instead of reinventing language, if somebody's put something together for us. We'll just kind of borrow that and, uh, use it as an example.
Okay, great. Thank you, Paul. My comment, um, kind of has to do with, I think, with what Teresa's, uh, suggestion was about the second half of the paragraph. Where it starts, the secretary shall also be custodian of the commission's records. Um, technically now, Paul, isn't that the city clerk's office? As far as public record, public meeting records, do we need to, to add some clarity there with regard to what records are kept where?
Could, could you repeat, repeat that, what phrase you just?
Well, I'm thinking about like with regard to, um, electronic records, permanent records. Uh, the city clerk's office is the repository for those, not, um, the, the, uh, the secretary. As custodian, it's essentially the secretary oversees it all. The creation of it along with us, the preparation of it, but isn't, aren't the custodial duties handled by the city clerk's office?
It, it, it is the clerk's office and, um, this may be going back, and again, when everybody can look at this. This may be going back to, uh, the formation of the planning commission. Um, you know, there shall be a commission, it shall be seven members, one from each ward, two at large. There shall be a secretary to the commission and then that secretary that kind of defines. Um, the role of the secretary and there may be a reference to, to records and that may be what this is referencing. Because the, the official, w- w- once, so yes, uh, in this instance, Aaron. Um, you know, he's secretary to the commission, he takes care of that and then when we, um. Um, archive the, the materials, it, it goes, the clerk is responsible for that, not Aaron, long term.
Okay, that's, that's a place that looked a little bit dated in terms of what our process is, so. Um, however you best think we could have, you know, achieved the, the verbiage there would be great. You know, also in terms of, of the clerk's duties. You know, it seems like, uh, other, uh, other things we need to maybe, um, include here. Uh, would this be an appropriate place to include Johan's suggestion about Lakewood speaks? With regard to clerk's duties in terms of posting agendas, um, posting documents, et cetera. Yeah, we would want to put this in two point five.
Ri- right, and, and I would spin that a little bit, so not going back and defining. Um, the duties of the, uh, secretary, but you can talk about materials to be included in the packet. Or, or posted with the packet.
Can we also talk about timing of the packet arriving seven days, seven calendar days? To the commissioners prior to a meeting?
Right, and that goes, that starts to get into dictating staff schedule. Um, you know, we, we try and get the packet to you, uh, seven days ahead of time. Um, uh, there. If you, if you stuck a number at seven days and, uh, something comes up, we're, we're tweaking a packet. Or we need another day to, to get something out, you were going to continue the hearing because we're gonna, not gonna make that date. And, and you're, you're going beyond the authority of the commission to actually starting to dictate. Um, how staff puts things together for the commission.
Sure, could we use language like, um, the staff shall endeavor to provide the packet seven calendar days in advance of a meeting? Just to kind of set a parameter where we all, and anybody new coming in has an expectation about, okay, this. This is kind of the flow of, of information here. Uh, I mean, I'm not intent on trying to, you know, dictate what other people that. You know, do, that's, that's not my desire here. I'm just trying to kind of clarify information flow. It seems to me like at any meeting, um, if a commissioner felt like they didn't have adequate time. To process information, they could motion to continue. So that, it seems like Robert's rules would give the commission an opportunity if they felt they needed it. Without putting in some punitive language in here. Does that make sense?
That does.
So you're okay with kind of a endeavor to deliver the packet seven calendar days, or you want to? You still want to talk about that further?
I, I think that's fine. I'm, I'm actually laughing because, um, I can't separate my head. So when we talk about the packet in seven days, right? Typically, you're getting a big manila envelope delivered to your door that's, that's paper. And we're not doing that now, um, because everything's going on, on Lakewood speak. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to wrap that language around where we're, uh. Uh, we're using Lakewood speaks, uh, as the forum to kind of take. Um, additional testimony, so the, the, the case is opened a couple of weeks before we actually hold the, the hearing before the planning commission. Ie, you can comment, uh, public, provide public comment online up until the evening of the hearing. So, um, let me, that, that's one I may ask for a little more time on. Um, I'm fine with the language and saying, you know, trying to get it by, by a certain date. Um, but I also want to make sure that I get it so that it also encompasses the, the new technology that we're using as well.
That's a great suggestion because packet is certainly a throwback term to how. Information used to be transmitted and however you think we need to update that, I'm, I'm open to it. I hope others are.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Paul. I see two hands, Alex and Kathy. Who was next? You know?
Um, I'll hop in real quick, just on that point. Um, I agree, I think that's a good idea to try to. I don't know, um, update language of packet, but, um, just, I, I don't want to strap. Staff down to a date either. Um, I do think that we have the power, if for some reason we called a meeting and. Any one of us didn't think we were, um, given materials needed to make a decision. We could make a motion to postpone or, you know, not carry on with the hearings. I think we could address that in a meeting. I wanted to look at section two point five still, item D. I mean, maybe taking something off the plate of the secretary. I don't think the secretary is administering the oath to people who want to testify during public hearing. We're not doing that, right? And if we do decide we want, um, you know, the public to. Take the oath before public hearing, then I, I wonder if that's more of a duty of the chair and not the secretary, if we decide to go that route.
I appreciate that question about administering the oath, cause, uh, as you know. Um, that took place when we were holding live meetings from time to time, when, when somebody would come in late and want to comment. Um, Paul, what do you think?
So, um. The, my, I'll give you my, my professional opinion. I don't think it's, uh, necessarily, uh, necessary to, to swear people in and have them provide. Um, you know, sworn in testimony. Um, that is reminiscent, uh, these bylaws are, are quite old. Um, that was not removed in two thousand and eight. Um, and this topic has come up. Uh, as part of discussion through several chairs, several chairs found it, um, kind of old and, and stuffy. And chose not to do it. Um, then you'd go, uh, a chair or two through the commission and then you'd have another chair who felt that. Um, it was important because by swearing someone in, um, their testimony i- is more valid. I've, I've heard attorneys go both way, uh, not a, a strong opinion one way or the other. Um, if you were to ask me, I would probably make my recommendation is removing that language. Um, i- in, in again, this is a document that, um, Commissioner Gill, when your chairman. Uh, ship is up and a new chair comes in and they want to swear people in, we can amend the bylaws to, to do that as well. So, um, that's, that's my professional opinion, personal opinion. Uh, it, it's up to the group whether you leave that language in.
Um, thank you, Paul. Um, I see Kathy and Johan and I think Teresa just jumped in their third. So Kathy, you want to begin and we'll go to Johan?
Um, yeah, I think I'm okay with what Alex mentioned. I had written down, um. Instead of being a specific, at, at least seven days, something about, y- you know, enough ahead of time so that we can be. Do our jobs as commissioners, you know, because we can't really be familiar enough. And we don't want to be in the position of having to postpone a meeting. Um, I, I don't know if some more general language. Um, would satisfy everybody was going to be my suggestion. I, I can go either way. Um, also along the lines of shortening this up, I think I heard this, but I wasn't sure. That are we going to take out that the secretary, um, trying to look at all the documents. That the secretary shall be the custodian of the commission's records? Because, did you say, Mr. Rice, that it's actually the city clerk who's the custodian of the records?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. And then I, I guess I'm, would be in line with just getting rid of the oath part. I had written down the question and it might be a Mr. Cox question. Can anybody administer an oath? Or do you have to have some special, something to be able to administer an oath? But I'd rather just get rid of it and then we don't have that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Uh, Teresa, or I guess Johan was next and then Teresa. Sorry, Teresa. Johan, please.
I've, um, I've had, I'm conflicted about the oath somewhat. In most cases, if people want to speak somewhat carelessly, um, in our public hearings. I think we can pretty well accommodate that, that we don't have to insist that they. Think that they have to be truthful, uh, in every respect. And generally, even if we put everybody under oath, they're gonna. Uh, they're going to say what they want to say. Um, on the other hand, there are a few instances where I'd like to, uh, have people who are going to testify. Uh, think about what they're really going to say, especially if it comes to factual things. I wish I could think of an example quickly. I, I think on the, um. Some of the original, uh, hearings on the white fence farm, I don't want to get too much into that. We had people talk about examples of, uh, when there was over parking. Or overuse of, uh, of certain streets and such. I think in a, in a hearing that's that serious, I would like to have people consider that. Uh, the weight of what they're really saying and not to say something off the top of their heads. Anyway, that's where I am on a normal public hearing. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, uh, thank you, Johan. Uh, now Teresa, I believe you're, you're up.
My question is to Mr. Rice, do you have a sense for how common it is for planning commissions? To swear in public commenters?
Um, I have not, uh, gone back and, and done a, a poll of the, the communities. I can tell you in the, the four jurisdictions that I've worked for. Um, Lakewood is the only one where we actually had, uh, the planning commissions swearing in. Um, there was another jurisdiction that I did work for where we actually, uh, the Board of Adjustment. A little different body, a little different testimony. Um, they did swear, uh, the, the, the. Audience in for testimony, but, but not the planning commission. So one jurisdiction I had, had, uh. It was mixed, you know, planning question, what oath for the BOA, not planning commission, the other two did not swear in. Um, and I'm trying to, if, if I can experience, I'm not aware off the top of my head what the other jurisdictions do. I, I haven't attended a hearing.
So I find myself wondering, thank you very much. I, I, you know, if it's like, we're the only ones doing it on the planet, I, you, we might want to reconsider. But, um, I find myself wondering, you know, in a court of law, you, you, you swear and then you can perjure yourself if you choose to do so. How would we enforce such a thing? If someone, if someone, uh, takes the oath and then lies to us, yeah, uh, what's the recourse?
That's a good question. Yeah, are, are you complete there, Teresa?
Well, if there, if there's no recourse, then I don't know why we have it.
That makes perfect sense to me. Um, kind of my following thought, if, are you done? Okay, my following thought on that is, uh, going back to my experience as a member of the. The gallery and city council meetings is I don't recall that they do anything similar. I don't recall there being a swearing in at any point in time, uh, with regard to public comment. And I think one thing that, that tells me is that, um, you know, from a legal standpoint, the city hasn't taken a position that that's necessary. And I think if we can emulate what they do, it's, it adds clarity to the public process. So I'm all for, um, eliminating it if, you know, unless Ms. Cox has a reason that a board or commission would need to operate differently. That's my comment. Alex, I see your hand again.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'm probably beating a dead horse, so I'll probably make it quick. But, um, Teresa raises a good point. I mean, in another hypothetical, if a member of the public chooses to not go under oath, what do you do? I mean, you can't, I can't keep them from making a public comment. Um, so I agree on that point. And then also just in my professional experience, I don't see it very often. Um, I've seen commissions and city council members and members of the public pledge allegiance before a meeting, but not go under oath for public comment. It's just my, my experience.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate that. Um, any other comments? Okay, well, I think we, seems to we have a consensus to remove that unless there's any impediments that come in later. Um, so are we complete with regard to section two point five? Think that we are. So shall we move on to two point six officers? Anybody have any, um, suggestions or questions? I have one of, um, I'll raise my hand after Teresa. Go ahead, Teresa.
Could, could someone help me understand why these ballots are secret? It's, it feels like it's Cold War stuff. Help me understand the reason. Do we need it to be secret? Just help me understand.
Would you like, do you have a, a thought or anyway? Um, I don't.
Right, and a- a- again, the, um, these rules and procedures are, are quite old. Um, one of the things I think they used, um, Robert's rules as well. Robert's Rules as well, in in how you you process the conduct of a of a meeting. And it's it's formal, right? And it it takes into account if there's a controversial election. I've not seen one of those. I have seen more than one commissioner nominated for a position and, you know, they they go through the vote. So it's I I don't have a good reason for for why they they were by secret ballot. In fact, the commission, in my experience, I think we've only done secret ballot one time since I've been at Lakewood. And the the chairs were uncomfortable with it as well. They they typically went with a voice vote.
Okay, thank you, Paul. My comment about, you know, 2.6 really has to do with the the word secretary. You know, I think we just covered in 2.5, it covers secretary to the commission. And then 2.6, it just mentions secretary. I think we might want to just do a little verbiage there and say secretary of the commission. So that there's a distinction between secretary to the commission and secretary of the commission. The duties of the secretary of the commission are spelled out, that they would run the meetings in the absence of the chairman and the vice chairman. But I that's just a little wording change that I think would make it a little more clear that these are two different secretaries. Any comments, Teresa? I see a hand.
Yeah, it's a it's a different topic, Alan. So I I think I want to wait a minute and let people comment on your comment first.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Are there any comments on my comment? I don't see any hands, so.
So in this section 2.6, I also had a couple of comments. Can we replace the pronouns he, she, and his with they? AP style uses they when the gender is not known. And that would bring us into the 21st century, I mean, 21st century and make this, make our language a little more inclusive.
I like that idea.
We could take a look and do like a word replace.
Kathy, how did you applaud that? Where'd that come from on your screen there?
It's under reactions.
Oh, good. Yeah, I didn't know that Zoom had features like that. That's good.
Yeah, thank you Teresa for thinking of that. I really appreciate that.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that's a good one. Okay, so we good there, Teresa? I have my hand up for another clarification that I think we might want to look at in 2.6, the last paragraph. Turn the page here, hold on. Something to do with, I wanted to add some some clarity there. I felt like, you know, I was looking at the sentence about successor chair. Yeah, where it says successor chair, I would I would like it to read a successor chair shall not serve beyond the end of an unexpired term of the previous chair unless duly elected to a new term in accordance with this section. Just to kind of clarify that if the if the chair changes, that it doesn't begin a new one-year chairman term, that it would be a completion of an existing term, something along, language along that line, just to clarify. Does that make sense? I guess it does. I see some nodding. Okay, any other thoughts, comments, suggestions on 2.6? Okay, shall we move on then?
I've got something. Sure, just regarding duties of officers, I think during our last election of officers, Paul, you mentioned outlined some things of the secretary. Are they contained here in the rules and regulations? I don't know if, I think signing of minutes is often done by the secretary, but it could be other things like approved motions and things like that. Are those listed somewhere here in the the rules and regs?
I don't have a copy in front of me, Commissioner Bartlett, but I but I think they are. I think it is essentially lists the the Platts, I think are Platts and resolution. I think it is. It's the planning commissioner resolutions and Platts that you would have to sign.
Maybe I just didn't see it. I'll look for that. And if I don't find it, maybe that's something we had. Maybe it's in the municipal code.
And and that's what I say, if it's not in the rules and procedures, it may be in the municipal code is where we're calling it from. And if not, we can definitely spell that out.
Okay, so so Paul, you'll look into clarification there. Okay, Alex, is that complete your thought? Right, thank you. So shall we move on into Article three? We're making pretty good progress here. 3.1 Comprehensive Plan. I see Teresa has a hand up.
Sorry, I had comments on 2.7, 2.8, and 2.9, and I'll just whip through those. I don't know if anyone else has got those or not. But so on 2.7, do we want to put some kind of some kind of description of what these allowable expenses might be? I mean, is it bagels? What is that? I gotta have no idea. Just something. I don't know what it is. Is it like, I don't know, if I print something and bring it to the meeting, I don't even know what this would be. So I mean, clarification for us and then also transparency for the public. I don't know what such things would be. Mr. Rice, maybe you can suggest something, you know, in the language you're going to be sending us. And in 2.8, could we, this is one of my desires for a cross-reference, the city policy and removing board commission members. We just like cross-reference whatever that is, number citation. And then 2.9, oh, I just wonder if we should clarify when it talks about the appointment, that that's going to follow what we've put in section, what's up in section 2.2? And then 2.3, since we're revising it, do we want to cross-reference that? So, thanks. That's all for two for me.
Okay, thank you Teresa. Johann, you have a hand up?
Yeah, on compensation. Yeah, I'm I'm not going to ask that we request a raise. But I think we might want to think about including some kind of a application process for actual expenses. I can only think of one time that this has come up. I think we had a member very early in my tenure who wanted to attend a conference that was especially instructive. And we might want to think of including a kind of application process for that, since that's the only expense I can really think about that might come up. If there's other kinds of expenses out there that people are focused on, why you could, you know, we can address it. But I think there might be an occasion when someone wants to take a trip or when someone wants to attend a conference, that there might be an application process for it and maybe a form designed for it. And maybe Mr. Rice could tone in on that because I think there is such a form among city employees. Isn't there something related to it?
Yes, there is. And if a commissioner has some interest in some training, we've been willing to send them to a conference. Maybe outside of the Denver area. I know we've sent a commissioner, essentially it's in-state. And I know we've sent a commissioner to a conference and they they've spent the night. So if there is something of interest, you know, we encourage you to make the request. And then we can we can formalize it. There's not ever been kind of a really a formal process. And we can put together essentially what I would fill out if I were to request participation in a conference. And so we can we can use that same material for the commission as a packet.
Okay, you complete Johann?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you Johann and Paul. Paul, I have my, kind of my question is just about the basic approval process for, or the request and approval process for these types of expenses. That wasn't something that I remembered from orientation. It might have been presented and went right over my head. So can you kind of tell me, generally speaking, who who has the approval authority there? Is that Director Parker or you, or how's it work?
It it is Travis. He's the ultimate approver.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so yes, Travis is, has final approval for education and and training. And, you know, there isn't a a formal in-house process. If a commissioner approaches me or Travis, they have an interest in a training session. We ask them for the information, you know, is there an overnight stay? Is there going to be a cost associated with taking their car? And then how much the conference is, you know, the, I'll need to check what the budget. There is some dollars that we have in our budget specifically for the planning commission for for training. And so as as long as that one commissioner doesn't drain. I haven't had a lot of requests from the commissioners at the same time. I have a very limited amount of dollars. And so if I have multiple requests, you know, we we need to talk about it. Typically, the the request that I have, they they've never emptied the budget. And and so there's always been a a training budget available. But we can, we can more formalize what that request process is.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Teresa, did we finish your questions? I think you wanted to talk about 2.8, 2.9?
No, I I went I went through all of them.
I got everything covered on that. I just wanted to be sure. Okay, Kathy, I see a hand up.
I was just wondering if we really need that beginning of 2.9. I find it a little bit odd. And we already have a place that says what you need to do to be there. Maybe it's that it starts with the word dies that bothers you much. I don't know.
I think you have some support with that Kathy. Yeah, maybe you want to look at that verbiage a little bit. What do you think, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, you're welcome to rework that a little bit. Okay. All right, that covers Article two then. Do we want to keep going in Article three? We need a break. I'm open to either. Any any suggestions for a break? Just raise your hand. Otherwise, we'll keep going.
I'd love to go, I'm going to go grab a drink of water. If y'all don't want a break, I'll be right back. I just got to refresh my water. So.
No worries. Well, we can wait till you get back. We don't just, I'll take a little break. I could switch water bottles myself. What do you want to call it? Five minutes or whatever?
Thank you.
Thank you. See you in five. That'll be eight fifty, give or take.
Thank you, Alan.
Well, it was timely. Good, a good suggestion.
I ran out of water.
Yeah, I had to switch water bottles myself. All right.
My partner made some killer sauce and I almost didn't come back from the kitchen, so. You're lucky I came back.
Well, it's nice you have that to keep you going tonight. So it looks like we're waiting on Aaron and Jonathan. Jonathan's, the Harry's just not on screen, but we'll wait for Aaron.
And we can, here, we can start without Aaron as well.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody, let's keep going. We've, we completed Article 2 at Section 2.9, I believe. So next up would be Article 3. Powers of the Commission. Do we have any hands up? Teresa, please proceed.
So just to start with an overall comment on this Section 3. Could we group these or indicate which? Group them into which items we decide versus which items we recommend to City Council to decide? I don't know if we do that with subheadings or something, but just to make it real easier to find. So you don't have to wade through so much text to figure that out.
Oh, what do you think?
Yes, we can, we can do that. And again, I think it. It, it's like an order of a listing that I've seen somewhere. And, and we can, we can change it. Something to the effect, something Platts, when items go to Planning Commission, depending on what they are. Platts perceive rezonings, which perceive something. So, but one, we can definitely group it for those that are recommendations. And then those that, that go to council. And then, let me verify that it's not codified on, on the order of, of how we hearing. Have a hearing and, and we can tweak those as well.
Okay, I like that suggestion, just to comment Teresa that. That's great, because I think it is a little confusing that on some things we decide and other things we make recommendations to council. That's a great strategy to, to bring a little clarity to it. Thank you. Any other comments on, on that comment? Well, we'll just go down the line here. 3.1. Paul, I have a question. Does the commission play an actual role in the updating and rewriting of the comprehensive plan? I mean, it talks about, you know, adoption amendment and maintenance. But it doesn't really speak to editing and revision quite so much. Should we address that differently? I mean. Or is it accurate the way it is?
So the, the Planning Commission is the body that's responsible for adopting and, and kind of administering the, the comprehensive plan. And when I say, so you, you understand what adopting is, administering is. When you adopt the comprehensive plan, whether we do a legislative rezone that's citywide. Or, you know, defined to a certain area. Or we go through and have individuals who request rezonings. That's kind of the commission administering the, the comprehensive plan. So you're making decisions whether to change the zoning or not. And then the, the. City staff supports the commission. We have a group, Conference of Planning and Research. Their responsibility is for updating and maintaining and, and amending the comp plan. If the, it could be a very tedious process if the Planning Commission actually wrote the comprehensive plan without staff support. Are you following me? So, you, you know, the editing and revision. So then you're, what I'm, what I'm getting to is there's like a staff function. So Rogers Group, they put together a draft, they provide it to the commission. And that's when you're editing and, and revising the document. And then how you do that, how big that document is, if you want to go page by page by page. That's one way to do it. It could take a very long time. Or it's something that you could go through and, and read the document and, and provide red lines. That document then goes back to planning staff. They take the commissioner comments as a whole, put them together and, and get you a draft document. And then they would highlight, so for instance, Commissioner Bartlet and Commissioner Peters have the exact same comment. They make that one, right? If there's a comment that Commissioner Bartlet and Peters have that conflicts, then they're going to point that out. So, you know, if, if it's something easy to do, they'll, they'll do it and look for your okay from it. If there's a conflict, they'll, they'll point it out that commissioners have a difference of opinions. And we'll either provide a recommendation and so forth. So we can clarify the language. And again, it's not to the point where you're directing the, the, the work group. Again, are you kind of following?
Oh, I appreciate what you're saying and, you know, I'm just trying to. I'm looking for a little more clarity and I certainly understand that the Planning Commission doesn't write it. You know, that it, that it's the, the same process that we follow on, on other things. They come to us as a recommendation by staff for approval. And then we would go through the usual process of motion, discussion, edits, red line. So that's our role. And I guess that's what I wanted to see, if there was a way to describe in a little more detail in our rules and regulations. Our role in the, in the. Periodic updating of the plan. I mean, as you indicated, you know, part of our administration of it is to deal with rezonings and, and changes under the comp plan. But what I'm reaching for is something I think that, that may be more succinctly defines the, the, the revision. The big revision every 10, is it 10 years of the plan? Whatever you think might add clarity or anybody, I, I see several hands up. So maybe, maybe someone can help clarify what I'm trying to say with their comments. Why don't we, is that add any clarity at all, Paul?
It, 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 it does, and it's just, it, it's not just anything. It's, it's, yes, it's, the, the, the commission is responsible for the document. And if they want to clarify how that, what those responsibilities are, you, you can't. And I, I, I don't have the comprehensive plan in front of me. I think one way that. I think the comprehensive plan says there's like an annual review. And then there's, they're supposed to go revisit it after a, a period of 10 years. And I, and I think, so. Think about how you clarify that in your rules and, and procedures. Versus actually having a, something in the comprehensive planning document where you say, you know, the commission's going to hold a meeting in the fall of every year to, to reevaluate the, the comp plan. That's something that would go into the comprehensive plan, not necessarily your rules and procedures.
Yeah, okay, that's an interesting suggestion. I'll move on to hands up. I don't know who was first. We have Kathy, Johan and Teresa. I'll just start at the top of the list, Kathy.
My suggestion for was, was exactly about that, about clarity. And it seems that the Section 3.1, well, it kind of deals with our responsibility and not about the specific process that we might use. So I don't think it negates anything that Mr. Rice said. If we were to simply quote the Charter, because it seems that 3.1 is just like a truncated version of what's exactly in the Charter. It says, "The Planning Commission shall make and adopt a comprehensive master plan for the physical development of the city, including amendments thereto and periodic updating thereof, subject to the approval of City Council." So would that give you the clarity maybe that you're looking for?
That would give me the clarity that, I think, and especially I always appreciate a direct reference to, you know, our guiding documents. I think that helps clarify where our authority comes from on these things. So yeah.
That would be my suggestion for clarifying 3.1.
Yeah, that's a great one. I think, what do you think? Anybody else? Comments? Are you through Kathy? You done? Okay, we, Johan?
Just to piggyback on Mrs. Kentner's comment. Going back to the Charter. There is hereby established a Planning Commission. "The Planning Commission shall make and adopt a comprehensive master plan for the physical development of the city, including amendments thereto and periodic," I think that's what, I'm just restating what Mrs. Kentner said. And that, what I wanted to emphasize is, the plan is, in a sense, our property. Council has to approve it, but we're the ones who, that do it. Now, realistically, since I helped with the la, with the present comprehensive plan. I think I came in a little over halfway through when we were doing all the public presentations. It's a lengthy process and planned, the present plan, since it's fairly technical. It does start with staff participation. But reran it through an extensive public process, which was, interestingly enough, pretty well participated in. When I was with it. Well, I actually participated before I was appointed to the Planning Commission. And we really had a nice process on it. So it went through several for, pieces of formation. And, but, just to put it in that context. You know, that's something that we have to work on. I also believe that the present plan does have a date attached to it in terms of where it looks forward. And I'm trying to remember what that is. And I've been looking around for my plan and it seems to have buried itself somewhere. If I can quickly dredge it up, I'll refer to it. But most plans have some idea of how far they project into the future. I might point out too, that the present plan really tried to bring together a whole series of neighborhood plans and to replace a plan that was really a very thick document. I think like about like this, if it fell off your desk, it could break your toe. So it, it made an effort to condense it to a more readable document.
Okay, thank you Johan. My recollection is that, just from the title of our, our plan, I think it's in it Lakewood 2025. So it's a 10-year, a 10-year time span.
Yeah, it did. It gave a vision of where the city would be by a date, and I believe it was 2025.
Okay.
If I can find it quickly, I'll bring it up, but I'm afraid it's already a lost cause.
Okay. Give him a second to look here. Well, Teresa, let's go ahead and if Johan wants to come.
Okay, go, go ahead. I, you give it that.
Don't, don't break your toe yet.
I've got a copy on my shelf. I just didn't get up and get it.
So. In this language in Section 3.5, I was concerned that we don't, that the language doesn't capture. And I'm going to thank Mr. Rice for giving me the word that we are responsible for the administration of the plan. So if we change the language to what Board Member Kentner is suggesting. I, I would like to somehow put administration implementation, something like that, that, that establishes that we own it. We're responsible for making sure it happens.
I think that's a, a good point. You know, it's very important because I think that if there's verbiage in there to that effect. It, it really serves to clarify that we have a role in, in being sure that it's implemented. And that, that, you know, as, as that role really comes into play when we're making decisions on a case by case basis. So I really, I, I think that's a great suggestion. Any other comments? Johan, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you. I just, guess what? I really did recover it. It is Lakewood 2025 and has a theme, Moving Forward Together. It has all the things you would expect, all the correct boilerplate for a plan. And I, it has had some revision. Now, even though we moved away from having neighborhood plans and then adding to it. We have done some revisiting of areas of the city following the development dialogue that we had a couple of years ago. So Union, our recent review of the Union Square Plan was a part of that process. You know, and I might point out that that did not receive the kind of public participation that our original plan did. I was a bit disappointed about that because when we did the plan. Back when we put this together. And I'm looking for a date now, for a date certain. It's been a few years ago now.
15.
Shoot, we did have some idea of when it might be revised, but we were looking forward to 2025. And obviously, like any plan, it can be amended.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you Johan. Any other comments or questions on 3.1? I think we'll move on 3.2. Any? Any questions, comments, suggestions? Okay, we'll move to 3.3. Final Platts, anything? I see a couple of hands. Teresa?
I, I had a same comment for 3.2 and 3.3. I was just not fast enough. So could we, could we add language? It talks about us hearing, could we say and decide upon? This is kind of that clarification of what we decide and what the City Council decides. We just can add that language to clarify that we're making the decision in 3.2 and 3.3.
All the way you think. I, I like that clarification. What do you think?
Yes, we can add that language.
Okay, great. Teresa, that's important because as we all learned. The meaning of a decision is much more clear when our documents spell it out. And we could even go so far as to say, hear and decide by majority vote. So that it's never called into question. I see some heads nodding. I, I'd like to add that footnote on Teresa's suggestion there. All right, so are we at, where are we at? 3.4? Any further comments? 3.4? Seeing none. 3.5 rezonings. Any, any comments or questions on that? I think I might have had one. I think my comment, looking at 5. About the, I guess it's the second sentence down, which currently ends in talking about. During the fact finding commission, they, they may hear and consider relevant evidence or statement, including without limitation. Application, staff reports, recommendations and any relevant testimony. I would just simply add after the word testimony, I would add by the parties or the public. To clarify that it's a public process. So that, that's my suggestion on that one. 3.5. Anybody else have anything on 3.5? Kathy, I see your hand up.
Who gets to decide what's relevant? I mean, I kind of think that we do. I mean, I kind of think that we do as a board. But I think, you know, I kind of, I don't know, it just seems to be a very subjective word in there.
Well, I'll certainly ask anybody if they have a thought about that. I have one, but Paul, is there any precedent from other situations that you might want to bring to this?
There might be, it might be a better term. So who decides what's relevant? Essentially, the the chair. So you have a rezoning request before you and somebody gets up and provides testimony about consolidated mutual replacing a water line in my neighborhood. That's not relevant to the case unless it's con mutual upgrading the water line to to support the rezoning, right? So the 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 point of relevant is to keep testimony to the topic at hand and and not something beyond of the scope of the request.
I understand that and and I could think that's a great example of why it bothers me because I would hate for somebody to be interrupted when they're talking about that irrelevant con mutual thing. But then they talk about something that is relevant because a lot of times people don't know. And it's not that they're trying to be irrelevant and they might have something relevant later on in their statement. So especially when you said, you know, kind of by the chair, I just, yeah, I would hate to have anybody's public testimony interrupted. I do understand that we can only consider, maybe that's where it belongs, is that we can only consider the relevant testimony when we make a decision. Food for thought, I guess.
Right.
Okay. I like that that clarification. I I certainly, we've all, you know, seen situations where where comments don't don't necessarily stay within the bounds of the subject. That's just human nature. It happens a lot. But I think Kathy's clarification is really good as as far as what we can consider. We can only consider relevant relevant stuff. I think also Paul's to Paul's point. I I see it as the chair's responsibility to try to rein that in. You know, I think Mayor Paul does a really good job of, you know, tactfully trying to, you know, keep some sideboards on things. It's hard to do. But I I think those two things together are how we would handle it. And I really like Kathy's suggestion. Relevant, you know, thank you.
So we can remove that term. It is ambiguous.
Oh, that's even easier. And then just have it, have it, you know, be the chair. I mean, I like the the consideration only of relevant, but if we remove the term, then we don't need to do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, does that settle it in your mind Kathy? Okay, all right. Anything else on three point five? Rhonda, I see a hand.
Yeah, I just had one comment. You had mentioned hearing testimony to clarify from the applicant and the public to make sure the public was included. I think if you're going to spell that out, you probably want to add staff as well.
Okay, staff, I think.
Or is that covered?
Is included. Let me read this. Commission may hear and consider any relevant evidence or statements, including without limitation, applications, staff reports, recommendations, and any relevant testimony. Let me, okay, this, I'm glad you brought that up because the word testimony to me would apply to applicant and staff. But testimony would not be the appropriate word to describe public comment. Does that make sense that we want to maybe cover public comments in a separate sentence?
Why?
The parties present and the parties provide testimony in the case. The public's not providing testimony, they're providing comments. Would that be a inappropriate? Kind of beyond your question here, Rhonda. Did I answer your question first of all?
No, I think it's good. If you're gonna go out and spell that out, then we probably want to clarify. So could testimony change to input or just trying to think of a way that would cover all of it?
I I think that works. I mean, to me, the word testimony implies something different than comment or input. Input is broad enough that I think that works. Just swap it out. Paul, what do you think? Anybody?
And so much, so I had this fleeting thought and then I let it go by because changing or adding parties and public was was kind of an easy thing to do. As we talk about this more, a little bit more, I I think the points are relevant. So as we go through, this would be an example where when we put the the rules and procedures together in in final draft or close to a final draft, we also have the the city attorney take a look at these just to make sure that there's nothing in conflict. And this is a, however we tweak this language, this was something I would probably point out to Mr. Cox and say, is this appropriate? So there is going to be a a legal review of this at some point. And I go back and forth because that's the the public public input or public comment, I mean, if if you follow, we don't do public comment at the planning commission, at city council they do. And then when you get into an actual hearing sediment setting, technically, when someone gets up and provides input, it's testimony because you're in a hearing type setting. So I'm not a legal authority. I think I would probably keep the term testimony and then just include parties. And and I don't think staff is testifying, right? Staff is is the supporting body and they're putting together a report. And then they are answering answering questions, but we're not providing testimony. As we we've done that in the staff report kind of sort of thing, just we're not, you know, offering. We can offer professional opinions if you have questions or are looking for information, but we're not there to and when we do recommend, make make a recommendation, but we're not there to argue with all the the comment and stuff that's made, that's that's your job. You take the input that you receive, the testimony that you receive to to make a decision. So I, I don't know.
We need to give you a little time to to think about verbiage. I think we can all maybe put a little more thought into that and and realize that we want to tidy this up a bit, but we don't quite have to do it tonight.
Right. I'll flag this one as I have a couple others. This would be a good example. I'll probably go back and look at some other examples that we have. And then if I need to, I'll even reach out to Tim to see how we could tweak it as well to to come back with something. Again, this is kind of first draft, so we've we've got some time to continue with it.
Okay, I think that's that's a great suggestion. Rhonda, what else you got?
Well, that sounds good. I, you know, I don't have a a set, you know, outcome for this. Just want to make sure we really thought it through. So thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Well, we're nine, almost nine twenty here. And I'm I'm just kind of wanting to take the pulse of the group. Do we want to go say to nine thirty and then call it good for tonight with the understanding, you know, that we'll continue the process? And tonight, go ahead and schedule our next study session on this. Or do you want to go to ten? Is there a? You know, how about a thumbs up if we stop at nine thirty and set our next meeting? I see a number. Okay, I think I think we'll do that then. Let's let's keep going. We got a few more minutes here, about ten, eleven minutes. So we were at three point five. So any comments on three point six? See any three point seven vacations? I see a couple of hands. Johan, go ahead.
I wanted to go back to three point six. Well, just and I'll ask Mr. Miller on this because I should be a little more astute on the planning committee on the rather zoning ordinance. Special use permits, do we now have an appeal to city council on that? It seemed that city council wanted to move in on some of the special use permits because of the one big commotion we had on that.
Special use permit approval is still planning commission, planning commission is the decision making body. Then there is no.
It doesn't go any further.
It doesn't go any further.
Okay.
May I interrupt Commissioner Cohen? I think the change that was made was that city council, Mr. Rice, does the city council now approve correctional facilities?
Is that it's just narrowed to correctional facilities?
And yes, there is a change there, Commissioner Kettner, and and to verify that, I'd want to go back and look. But yes, there is a change specific to.
We don't have to. Well, I don't know, maybe we do be have to be concerned about that in our rules. Although I don't know, is it, does that rest with city council exclusively? Or do we weigh in on that? Well, maybe, maybe we can't answer that tonight.
Yeah, let let me, let me get that change and I'll provide that to the question as well.
Thank you. That that's it for me.
Okay, thank you Johan. Teresa? You reviewed it, I think, Teresa.
Sorry, I tried. I was going to suggest a cross reference in section three point six where it talks about conditional approvals or conditionally approving it, just cross reference section three ten, which is the first time it really talks about conditional approvals or where it talks about it in general terms.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the cross reference to three ten?
Three ten.
Okay.
Yeah, three ten is where it starts, where it goes into that conditions.
Okay. Very good. I guess Johan and Teresa are complete. So we've gone back to three point six. So do we want to move into three point seven? I I guess we're there and we'll start and go seven more minutes and then I'll call it and we'll discuss our our next meeting. So three point seven, are there any comments Johan?
Yeah. When I looked at this, I kept thinking, when was the last time we ever acted on a vacation? I noticed some have gone through city council, but I don't know that we were asked to weigh in on it. And maybe I'm missing something here, but or it got past me. But I, you know, I think we ought to be involved in some of it. And maybe I'm forgetting something, but I just don't think we've had very many. And yet I know some have gone to city council. Mr. Rice, do you have any recollection on that?
Right, and I am not aware of bringing a vacation to the planning commission unless it was tied to a a larger case that had a a rezoning or a plat involved. And that may be where the action comes in, if it's associated with the plat. Because the the city council is the body responsible for ministry and public property. And so the, when they're they're dealing with right of way, those requests go directly to council. So let me, let me provide clarification how commission would act upon a vacation.
Well, I see that Director of Community Planning and Development has some primary responsibility in this area also. At least our rules recite that he does. The commission will request at the sole discretion of the Director of Community Planning and Development. So, you know, he hasn't referred anything like that to us for a while. But a lot of these are pretty ministerial, aren't they? I mean, we're not talking about big vacations. We're usually just short easements or places that have not been in use for quite some time.
Right, most of them are are either picking up additional right of way to accommodate a traffic signal, getting rid of excess right of way where it may be causing a problem or or the city doesn't have like a a future need for it. And and they're not huge vacations of of property. I think the most recent one that went to city council is in the Rooney Valley where they're looking at the roundabout, adding a roundabout, and so they needed to acquire, I think, some additional right of way in in that location to for the roundabout.
I mean, it it would simply be a delay to bring it to us. A lot of them are fairly foregone conclusions.
Right.
That's all.
Okay, thank you Johan. Kathy, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Johan for your comments. I meant to mention this kind of along the same, I think the operative word there is the commission. The first sentence is the commission may review. So that's probably why we haven't seen them. But along the same lines, and I don't know if it goes in three point seven or three point four with annexations, are disconnections. And the city has seen a couple of disconnections recently. And it seems that that's a shortcoming and you know, I know that there's no, that when you have an annexation, there's a zoning involved. I suppose unless there's an O D P because it's coming into the city. But it would seem like disconnection would be one of those things that the city council at least, or city council, that the planning commission at least may hear. Any thoughts, Mr. Rice?
Could you clarify what you mean by disconnections?
When a piece of land is going out of the city. In the Rooney Valley, there was recently a request to de-disconnection is like de-annex, I suppose. Would that be a good description, Mr. Rice?
Right, it it's just the reverse of bringing property in, you're you're sending it out. So in the term they use in the state statutes is disconnection instead of de-annexation, just to keep everybody on their toes. You you bring up a good, a good point. I have a a little different personal slash professional opinion. You know, when you annex property, most, most always your your rezoning as it as it's coming in and and it should go to the planning commission. Most of the annexations I've presented to the planning commission or 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 been at when something's been presented is to remind the commission that they're not acting on the annexation. They're actually acting on the rezoning. And the direction from council has been, you know, they're the the authority decision making body on annexations and and disconnections. We can, again, the it's not something that the rules and procedures aren't they're governing the, you know, the operation and function of the body, so it wouldn't change. Council would have to to make that change to say that the planning commission is now responsible or may see disconnection. So I I wouldn't recommend doing that here in the rules and procedures. You know, if that's something that the commission wanted to make a presentation to or request the council, we could, you know, that's something they could do as well.
It would seem like if we use the word may, that it would be perfectly appropriate that we, you know, may make a recommendation, not that we would be required to. I'll give it some further thought. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Kathy and Paul and Johan. Thank you for bringing that up. I really appreciate the question because I had a similar question about the operation of the word may and how it works. And so Paul, thank you for you know, digging into this to help us try to clarify language. I think any place where we can spell out a little bit more about how we, the the planning commission would get involved would would be good. Because I've I've gotten questions about some of these things when they show up on the city council agenda. And I'm kind of embarrassed to say I don't know why it is it didn't come to the planning commission. So I need an education there and I think maybe through your improvement of this verbiage, we can get there. So we are now at nine thirty. And so I am going to close this topic and real quickly open general business. And real quickly, open general business. And suggest under general business, first item of business is to schedule our next study session on this process. Does anybody want to toss a date out there? Paul, maybe we look at your calendar as it's probably the most busy.
Right, well, I keep, I keep my. Mondays and Wednesdays open, other than soccer practice occasionally and I can. Well, I've got someone assisting with that. So what I'm looking at is, you know, the the quick one. I would probably ask for a little more time. We could go September ninth, which is the. Second Wednesday in September. And again, that's the, that's shortly after the holiday. I'm not sure how much of this I can get into a draft document for you and get back out by the ninth. So if you were to ask me for a date, I I think I would prefer September twenty third, which is the fourth Wednesday. Wait, I can't count. Second, third, fourth, yeah, which is the fourth Wednesday in September. So the ninth or the twenty third. And if those don't work, I can look into October as well.
Well, let's just show up hands for the, I I would say twenty third. There's no reason to rush Paul's research, absolutely not. Comments?
Yeah, I thought that during the board of adjustment meeting, didn't we set a meeting date for the sixteenth? For that. And I know that traditionally study sessions are the other ones, but as long as would it work to do a study session. As long as we're already meeting then on the sixteenth.
And that's perfectly acceptable as well.
So if we do that on the sixteenth, maybe we don't expect. Mr. Rice, for you to have a redline document or whatever. I'm not sure what you were planning to prepare for us. Maybe we do an abbreviated version of that. Just continue the discussion.
Because we still have to go through the rest of the document anyhow, right?
Right, right. And so, you know, on the, so maybe this is the compromise if we. Or or me asking for a compromise, if we go on the sixteenth, maybe the the materials that I've noted that I'm going to provide to you. We can get you all of those materials by the honor before the sixteenth. And then we can continue with, you know, redlining the document and that'll give us an opportunity to start our draft as well. And then we can kind of let you know where we, where we ended up with that. If we get up to three point seven, we could send that to you. I'm not sure we'll be able to do that with the four of us in the office and everything else we've got going on.
Okay, what I'm hearing is the sixteenth will work for you.
Yes.
And I I certainly acknowledge that, you know, we're only partway through this. I think we've made great progress tonight. But, you know, I think our next order of business will be to continue through the document. Before we're in a position to want to look at a red line. Right, we see the red line on everything. So I would look at the sixteenth as the next working session, basically. Hopefully, we get all the way through and then that sets you up for. A complete red line whenever that can be done. Does that make sense? So everybody thumbs up on the sixteenth? Think we got everybody. It's very good. Paul, if you'll help. Staff with regard to getting that posted online, the notice of that, we appreciate it.
Yes.
Any other items in general business? What's that, Paul?
Not from staff.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I see no commissioner hands. So I will adjourn this meeting. This study session at nine thirty four P M. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. You guys have a good one.
Thanks, Erin and Jonathan, too. Goodbye, guys. Everybody.